Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education Business Meeting tonight for Monday, June the thirteenth, about to say the thirteenth. Weekend sort of got messed up with all the graduations, but it's good to be here tonight. First order of business is me to call the meeting to order, and I've done that. Tonight, our opening ceremony will be a presentation of colors by a combined unit of the junior ROTC units that we have. And we have Cadet Major Gary Cooper from Mount Pleasant High School. We have Cadet Senior Airman Cortez Steele from Central Cabarrus High School. And Cadet First Lieutenant Quinn Hemler from J.M. Robinson High School. And Cadet Senior Master Sergeant Matthew Luke, Northwest Cabarrus High School. All of these are the Air Force Junior ROTC cadets. And the Air Force cadets are being instructed by our Master Sergeant Carlos De La Cruz and Lieutenant Colonel Nelson English. Both of them are from Central Cabarrus. And then we have from Mount Pleasant Cadet, I'm sorry, Chief Master Sergeant Kevin McLaughlin and Lieutenant Colonel Malcolm Snell. And from Northwest, we have Senior Master Sergeant Corinne Smith and Lieutenant Colonel Calvin Martin. And also from J. Robinson, we have Master Sergeant Wayne Altrum and Lieutenant Colonel Scott Rose. Now that our color guard is here, may we all stand for presentation of colors.
(inaudible) 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 You notice the different colored berets the cadets wearing?
As I've mentioned, that's the representation of the different schools. And I think it's wonderful that we can have our schools work together like that and bring them together. They may have never even met before, but yet they can work together good. So anyway, they did an excellent job for us this weekend out at the event center where we had all of our graduations. And so they play a vital role, junior ROTC cadets and the leaders. And we thank them so very much for all their dedication and all the efforts they put forth in seeing to it that our meetings and gatherings are properly conducted. All right, board members, we're going to move into the setting of the agenda tonight. We need to make one change to our agenda on the consent agenda, which is the items, you know, that we normally have one vote and we move on. We want to remove one of those items and put it on the action agenda. And that will be the Title I program, where there are going to be some alterations to that program. And so I'll need a motion that we adopt the agenda while removing Title I from consent to action.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Shoemaker. Second. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries and the agenda is set with the exception of Title I being on the action agenda. All right, are moving on into the section where we'll have our recognitions. And tonight, I'd like to invite Ms. Kathy Auger to the podium where she's going to talk with us about the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. And Tim Vaughn.
Good evening. Tonight, we wrap up the school year presenting Hillbush Ford Teachers of the Month for May and June. Mr. Vaughn, we thank you and Hillbush Ford for your support during this school year. Your willingness to recognize our outstanding teachers speaks volumes about your commitment to our community and to our schools. Thank you so much for your generosity. The Cabarrus County Schools Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for May 2013 is Trent Smith. Mr. Smith, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team Trent Smith is a history teacher at Mount Pleasant High School. He was named for this award by a student. In his nomination, the student wrote, "Mr. Smith is quite an outstanding teacher, and when you were in his class, you get the feeling that he truly cares for the students." Being one of his students, I can say history was never one of the courses I enjoyed taking, but Mr. Smith makes it different. Mr. Smith really knows how to teach his topic and get the students involved. He is truly the most outstanding teacher you will ever meet, and I'm honestly glad to be part of his class each and every week. So, Mr. Smith, on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, thank you for the care and concern that you demonstrated toward our students. Thank you. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for June 2013 is Pepper Martin. Mr. Martin, would you and your family and any members of your school's administrative Pepper Martin teaches Algebra I at Hickory Ridge Middle School. He was nominated for this award by a parent who wrote in his nomination, "Mr. Martin is exactly what more middle school teachers, what more middle schools need." Sorry. "He understands the middle school student, relates to them, and provides instruction in a fun and engaging way. On a daily basis, I would hear from my daughter how enjoyable her Algebra I class was, but in the same breath, how much she was learning. Middle school is a difficult time for all students. Mr. Martin embraces this and makes learning fun." Mr. Martin, on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, thank you for making learning fun in your classroom this year.
And once again, congratulations to the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. And Mr. Vaughn, thank you so much again for doing that. We hope you'll just keep right on doing that year after year after year. And these folks just keep on buying them Fords. That's it. So we appreciate you coming out and being with us tonight. Our next recognition will be conducted by Dr. Colleen Sane. And you notice she's right there at the podium, incidentally, for whatever it's worth. You know, I have to mention this, Dr. Sane, you know, she's retiring. We're losing Colleen at the end of the month. She'll be moving on to higher ground and all that, but anyway.
But she don't want to move there too quick.
Well, we don't want to move too fast. But anyway, Dr. Sane, thank you for everything. Thank you for all you've done. And you've got a recognition to do here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schue.
Well, Robert Klutz and any of his family members who are here, please come forward.
I'm honored to be here tonight to present to you a true veteran of public education who has recently been recognized at the state level by the North Carolina Driver and Traffic Safety Education Association. The purpose of this state organization is to promote safety education and driver education and traffic safety in schools, colleges, and universities in North Carolina. And to promote the conservation of human life as related to vehicular and pedestrian traffic safety. Robert Klutz received the Philip Forrest McGirt Junior Lifetime Achievement Award to recognize and honor his lifetime of dedication and service to driver's education in the students of North Carolina, and may I also say the students of Cabarrus County. His 48 years of public service to the students of Cabarrus County and his representation and work at the state level serve as a model for all of our school, public school employees. Congratulations.
Our next recognition will be presented by Mr. Brian Tyson. And so when you get ready, Brian, we're ready.
Okay. We'd like to acknowledge a state champion that we had from Cox Mill High School, Elijah Goins. Elijah couldn't be here with us tonight. I think the senior beach trip won out over attending a board of education meeting. Can't imagine that, can y'all? But he, we wanted to acknowledge him anyway. He was a 3A state champion in the 110-meter hurdles with a winning time of 14.67 seconds. And he was also, he also won the Midwest Regional Championship as well. To brag on him about some other accomplishments that he had also academically, he had a 3.81 unweighted GPA and a 4.33 weighted GPA. Was a scholar athlete, was in the National Honor Society. He was also a three-year letterman in football, making all-conference in 2012, and a three-year letterman in track, making all-conference in 2012 and 2013. And his, he will be attending the Ohio State University this coming fall. Thank you very much.
I would suppose he's probably enjoying himself at the beach somewhere about right now with a lot of our high school seniors that I know went this week, this week. Okay, we're moving on with our recognitions. The next one is the North Carolina Soil and Water Conservation District. We'd like to have Mr. Dennis Testerman. I think I seen him earlier. I think I did. And Ms. Ronnie Boone to the podium.
Yes, and I would like to invite Mr. Testerman to come up with me to present this award.
I thought I, there he is. I thought I seen him here earlier.
Each year, the State Soil and Water Conservation District sponsors student competitions in a variety of categories. And each year, students from Cabarrus County Schools make us proud by winning at the regional and state levels. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce that we have a state winner in our midst, and we will meet her in just a few minutes. But I'd like to allow Mr. Dennis Testerman with the Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District to talk to you about our winner and how she, what she won her state award for. So, Mr. Testerman.
This might be a good time to ask Madeline Barfield to come down. And with her is Jody Hott, her teacher. So, Madeline Barfield is the winner of the Second Annual State Soil and Water PowerPoint Contest. This was a fairly new contest. It was started just a year ago. And the theme this year was Water the Cycle of Life. Madeline's entry won at the district level, then advanced to the regional level and on to the state level and won, won there. As I already said, last year was the first year of that contest, and Harris Road took the plunge the very first year. And Hannah Watson from Harris Road Middle School won that award last year. So they are on a roll now, two years in a row. The PowerPoint presentation, you've got the cover slide at least up on the screen. I wanted to read you just one of those slides out of that presentation as it scrolls, just for emphasis. Madeline says, "Kids aren't just the leaders of tomorrow, they're the dreamers and doers of today." So the question is, will you do it right? We really appreciate that sentiment. A lot of what we do with our conservation district is we talk about legacy projects. One of the conservation easements, I was here talking with you about stream restoration and easements that would go on a stream just a month or so ago. And then the other is in the area of education. Certainly feel like a lot of what we do is leaving a legacy in that area as, as well. And with capable students like Madeline, they are helping us get that job done and can oftentimes say it better than the adults can by far. And I think she's done that with her PowerPoint presentation. So, with no further ado, on behalf of the board and staff of the Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District for helping the state of North Carolina promote good soil and water conservation practices, this certificate is presented to Madeline Barfield, representing Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District, the 2013 State Soil and Water PowerPoint Contest, Water the Cycle of Life.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, and board members, our last recognition tonight will be presented by Dr. Barry Shepherd, our superintendent. And so you notice he's already there. He's waiting, ready to go, too.
I'm learning, all right?
I know it. I appreciate your help.
Chairman Schue, would you please, and Ms. Klutz, please come forward and stand on the tape. I have an award for both of you tonight.
I'm pleased to present to the Cabarrus County Board of Education and the Chief Finance Officer, Ms. Kelly Klutz, with the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This award is given by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada to organizations for their comprehensive annual financial report. The certificate is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. And in its awards letter, the association wrote, "The Cabarrus County Board of Education's comprehensive annual financial report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story." I congratulate you, Chairman Schue, and you, Ms. Klutz, for this outstanding award. And let's give them a round of applause.
Surprises, surprises. Not for me, but from, you know, I mean, I know Ms. Klutz is, she is just absolutely wonderful when it comes to financial matters. And she has just been such, such a great asset to our system. Thank you so much for everything. I think we've had year after year after year with no findings, audits by independent lab that does the work, and we never have any findings. And that's a good thing. Okay, so let's move on, board members, so we can continue with the meeting. We're going to get into the approval of the minutes for May the 6th, 2013 work session, minutes for May the 13th business meeting. You've had the minutes, and I think there was a change or two that have been submitted. Ms. Monroe, our board clerk, has made those changes. So are there any other changes or corrections that we need to know about? No changes, no corrections? May I have a motion that the minutes for those two meetings be approved as they are presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison.
Second.
Second, Mr. Shoemaker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, six, zero. All right, we'll move into the report section now, and this is where I have a chance to say a few things. And I wanted to talk just for a minute or two about the graduations for this past weekend. Is there anybody in the audience that got to attend the graduations this weekend? May I see your hands if you did? We know Mike did, some of you others. But if you haven't been, you'll notice that they really have got this thing down to a science almost, and I just appreciate all that they do. But we offer congratulations to the class of 2013. And like we said earlier, they're probably scattered all over the place since then and now, but we're hoping that they're careful and having a good time. But this past weekend, we held our graduation ceremonies for eight of our schools. You may recall that the Early College High School held its graduation earlier in the spring. This was the first graduating class of the Early College. We had 24 students graduate, and 19 of those students graduated with their high school diploma as well as a, an associate's degree. And this was our first year doing this. And that's, that says a lot about those 24 students. 19 of them walked away. They graduated from the Early College and from high school, all in the same day, with a two-year associate's degree. Cabarrus County Schools offers that to the students that want to exceed and want to excel. So we hope that that will be utilized, that program will be utilized more in the future. And I'm also pleased to report that these students are also recipients of $26 million, thereabout, in scholarships. And we had a close to 1,878 graduates that walked the stage down here at the event center this weekend. So that tells you, you know, when they're $26 million in scholarships, somebody's working hard to generate those dollars that they can pursue their educations. And we're not even sure that's the final amount yet because we're still in the process of finalizing the information about all the scholarship dollars received. And they'll, will be able to report an accurate number to us again later on in the weeks ahead. The board and I would also like to thank Dr. Shepherd and his staff for hosting such a well-organized ceremony. Your attention to detail and your coordination with the staff at the arena made for a pleasant experience for all the guests. And when you think about it, when you get 2,500, I would say roughly 2,500, 3,000 people in and out in three hours, and everybody go home safely, that's a pretty good accomplishment. So anyway, once again, I want to congratulate the class of 2013, and I hope that they'll continue on with their education and pursue their dreams and make every day count because they do count. And with that being said, Dr. Shepherd, do you have your comments ready?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to echo your words of congratulations to the graduating class of 2013. We wish only the best for them as they head out into the world. And also want to congratulate Royal Oaks Elementary School Girls on the Run Chapter, which has been selected as the Charlotte Metro Region Site of the Year. Girls on the Run inspire girls to be joyful, healthy, and confident using a fun, experienced-based curriculum which creatively integrates running. The Royal Oaks Chapter recently held a fundraiser for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, raising more than $2,000 for the organization. The group chose to support leukemia and lymphoma as part of the school's year-long focus on kindness and compassion through Rachel's Challenge. So congratulations to the Royal Oaks School Girls on the Run Chapter. Also, congratulations are in order for Mount Pleasant Elementary School Art Teacher Darrell Melanda, whose artwork will be featured on an upcoming TV broadcast of Charlotte Hounds' Major League Lacrosse game on June the 15th. His pieces will be used as teasers during the broadcast and presented to one of the players. The game will be broadcasted at 7:00 PM. Check your local listings for the specific channel. And you can also see the artwork that will be featured on our website at www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us. Also, last week, the North Carolina House of Representatives released its budget proposal. In total, the House version is more favorable toward public education than either the Senate or the governor's version. For example, the House budget proposal includes fewer cuts to teacher assistance. In its version, Cabarrus County Schools would only lose 25 teacher assistant positions under the governor's budget. Cabarrus County Schools would lose 113 in the Senate's version, and that number would jump to 139 in the governor's. So the House-proposed budget also includes more funding for school safety. However, the House proposal also includes funds for opportunity scholarship grants, which creates scholarship grants of up to $4,200 per year for eligible students to attend non-public schools. Opportunity scholarship grants are otherwise known as vouchers. Finally, I want to remind our viewing audience that all Cabarrus County school offices and buildings will be operating on our summer, summer schedule beginning today through August the 9th. All Cabarrus County school buildings and schools will be open from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Thursday. Please visit our website for each school's enrollment, and thank you for the opportunity to give my report.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. And we always appreciate hearing from you at our meetings. Our next subject here will be the guest speaker section, and I believe we've got about 10 speakers lined up. And we'll start from the top, go to the bottom. Remember, if you're speaking on, as an individual, you have three minutes. And if you're speaking on behalf of a group, you have five minutes. And so our first speaker tonight is DeeDee Wishawn. And DeeDee, when you come to the podium, I think you're speaking on behalf of the Association of Teacher Assistance, so you get five minutes. And whenever you start, the clock starts, okay? Thank you, DeeDee, for being here.
Thank you to the school board and Dr. Shepherd for letting me speak tonight on behalf of teacher assistants and teachers. I have attended many meetings and have heard how the board supports teacher assistants. But do you really know what an exceptional teacher assistant and a regular teacher assistant job entails on any given day? Each school principal relies to teacher assistants in many ways. Most schools use teacher assistants in K through 2nd grade, but they might help out in other grades. And some schools use 1 and 2 TAs in 3 to 5th grade. We have some schools that use 2 and 1/2 teacher assistant positions for one teacher. Wherever they utilize teacher assistants, we are there to make a difference in a child's life. Here are some examples of an EC teacher assistant can do on a daily basis, working eight hours a day. Morning and afternoon duties, check agendas and homework, math reading and writing programs, teach social skills, monitor students, maintain and assist classrooms with behavior issues, clean up after students, help students have correct dietary and personal hygiene needs, supervision and counseling students until they can return to the classroom. Kindergartens TAs usually are assigned one kindergarten teacher, but some will help out in other grades. First and second and third grade TAs are shared between more than one teacher and might help in other grades, too. They also, their duties can include morning and afternoon duties, check homework and agendas, math and reading/writing workshops, help with 21st technology in the classroom and computer labs, clerical duties, multiple grades for direct instruction, one-on-one and group time with students who need the extra help, handling sick and behavior children. Nowadays, there is a very little taught in a whole group. There are four to six different academic levels a teacher has to teach in lower grades. The students are not independent enough to work while their teacher is teaching a small group. Teacher assistants are needed in the Teacher assistants are needed in the classroom to help teach and monitor, monitor the other students. Schools are pulling teacher assistants to cover classes for parents' meetings, substitute teach, proctoring, sub for DI or intervention, RTI testing, and drive a bus for a field trip. Instructional times for our regular groups are effective when we are pulled out for other duties in a school. Ask yourself these few questions. If you take a teacher assistant out of the classroom in a school, are your test scores going to go down? Maybe not next year, but years to come. Who's going to help the children who need it the most? Who is going to help with proctoring and RTI testing? Who's going to cover a class when emergencies arise? How are the children going to be able to learn when there's maybe some safety issues coming about? Are the teachers going to have that extra planning time that admin wants when they are going to be doing all the clerical work when a TA helps them out? Would it not be better for a TA to be in the building so that we won't have children fall between the cracks? Or do you want them to fail and drop out of school? The school system gets money from the state for teacher assistants to work eight hours a day. Two years ago, the School Board voted to take us down to six hours a day and cut jobs. When the state tells the school system that they need money back, the School Board takes it out of the teacher assistant fund. Do you not think we need to look at it and take it somewhere, take out somewhere else and keep the teacher assistants in the classroom? I was a teacher assistant bus driver a few years ago. I had a student who was in first grade and he would get on the bus and he wanted to show me his work because nobody at his home wanted to look at his work. He was struggling in spelling. So as the other students were getting on the bus, I helped him with his spelling words. In third grade, he was, he did a part, third grade party, Christmas party, and they made scars for the mom, the stepmom, or someone special. I was that someone special. He gave it to me. I was, I was there when he needed somebody to care about what he did, not just part of the education, but I cared for what he did. He left, he left in third grade. I do not know where he's at today, but I know that I was his special mom at school because that's what he called me, was mom, and he thought, all the other kids thought I was his mom. I'm thinking positive that the funding will come for teacher assistants. We need to be there for the teachers and the school, but more importantly, we need to be there for the students. There's a saying, "If there's a way, we'll, there's a way." I hope the state will find a way for teacher assistant funding and there is a way for the School Board will use the allocated money for TAs in the school. Please bring teachers back into the classroom where we belong. Let us make a difference in a child's life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wishawn, for being here. Our next speaker is Lisa Perry. Is Ms. Perry here? Here she comes.
I have two kids in Cabarrus County Schools. I'm here as a parent. I've also been making the rounds at budget meetings and talking to county commissioners and I have talked to anyone who will have coffee with me. I met for three hours with every teacher at my school that wanted to talk to me today. I am giving my time as a parent because I care. I came here tonight because I have a rising third grader. He's got 10 years here, guys. He's got 10 years and I want them all to be good. I have seen the impact teacher assistants have had on my oldest son's life and on his. He is an AIG kid. He's at the top. He's already have been tested into that program. My fear is that as we lose those folks who pull those kids into those small groups, my child will suffer. He won't grow to his full potential. He was given the Big Thinker Award by his teacher this year because there was always somebody to listen to every idea that he had. He's not the kid who's not leaving, reading at grade level. If there's 20-some kids in a class and we've got to get everybody up to speed, Dylan's fine. He's fine. Let's get these other kids out. The teacher's assistants truly are co-teachers in the classroom. I'm excited about the technology that's coming into the classrooms. I would like to hear more about the vision for incorporating it. At the moment, it feels like more is being put into that than into people in the classrooms. I would like to hear about how that's not the case and how it's going to be implemented. But no amount, no technology is going to listen to my son's stories when he's in kindergarten. You know, my kids are going to be grown by the time a lot of this technology is truly making an impact. But I'm here today for every kindergarten parent who's sending their kid off to school because I want it to be a great place. I've watched seven years of Cabarrus County Schools. I've seen some great things and I've seen some things that need work. And I can promise you that no teacher assistant is in our building not being utilized to their fullest. By far, the most progressive people in the educational system are the teachers and they continue to face not getting raises year after year. They sat with me and talked about things that they could do for next year. Fur has been hit hard. You know, that charter school's in their backyard. Their Title I funds are at stake and they're really struggling. Maybe they're not the school way at the bottom, but they're on that fringe, you know, and we have to give them support. A lot of the families that were involved and volunteered in the classrooms are leaving. They are going to take a chance at a school that may not have licensed teachers, but they're going to go give it a shot. And that has to tell us something about what we're doing. So I would say to you, please, I hope the funds come back for teacher assistants, but I want you to understand the role that they're playing and how significant they are. I envision them helping implement the technology. I want those computers in my kids' hands fast. I don't want to wait five years. Dylan will be in middle school by then. My son will be about to graduate. I want to see it soon and I swear these people can help us do it. So I just wanted to plead with you today for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry, for being here. Our next speaker is Maria Erlewood. Is Maria here? There she is. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. When I first heard about the possibility of teacher assistants being cut, laid off, I was thinking, no, this will never happen. They have said this before, but boy, was I ever wrong. When the decision was made, I was literally at a loss of word for every assistant that would not be coming back next year. I may not know all 129 of these teacher assistants personally, but I do know what each one does on a daily basis. As a mother of three, and two of which are still in elementary school, and one that this decision is going to greatly impact, not only am I speaking about for her future, I'm speaking about the others that are currently enrolled and those that are yet to come. My child, who has currently finished kindergarten this year, would not be the student that she is without them. Having come from a home that she didn't attend preschool, she knew how to write her name, her ABCs, her numbers, her colors. But there are more and more that don't know this. She did not know how to read upon entering kindergarten. Now she is reading on a second grade level. I owe it all to both her teacher and her assistant. Without a reading mastery program that is staffed by both teachers and assistants, students will not be reading at the appropriate levels and thus causing problems in later years of school. The prime time for laying the foundation for reading is during their kindergarten to second grade years. And if the assistant is not there to help, then who will? I have heard for many years that the student-to-teacher ratio was going to decrease. Now with this decision, it is going to be raised. How can a teacher continue to have more and more state regulations placed upon them do this without any help? Teachers currently take homework with them so it can be completed and without the assistance, I'm sure this will increase even more. Thus, taking away their family time, is this fair to our teachers? No, it isn't. We each should have our family time. Each one of you who has a child can remember that very first day that you took your child to kindergarten, dropped them off in your kid's classroom. There was probably many tears shed, lots of clinging, lots of crying, but you can all remember who was there, your teacher, their teacher, and their assistant. They have wiped many tears, fixed many boo-boos when a parent wasn't there. They play an instrumental part in helping our children learn about the rules of what it means to be in school and about life. More and more children are coming to school, having never been to a preschool, coming without being properly potty trained. And it takes both a teacher and an assistant to handle these children. What about the child that is a runner? What if, what is a teacher to do? Stand there, watch the child run away, pray that nothing happens to this child? Go after the child, leave her other 20 students, more or more students there to not do it? Without the teacher assistant, we cannot do this. The safety of our children is going to be greatly impacted. I urge each of you to please give our assistants their job back. We need them. We love our assistants as much as we love our teachers. Without them, where's the future for our children?
Thanks again, Ms. Erlewood, for your comments. Now we next have Ms. Amber Newton. Is Ms. Newton here? And there she comes.
Hi there. I don't do public, public speaking, so I'm sorry, but I'm here today as a parent of two little girls that attend Mount Pleasant Elementary School, also as a director of a local childcare center where our regulations for a five-year-old is 15 kids per one teacher. I done it today by myself and I'm going to tell you, my head was spinning by 2 o'clock this afternoon. So I just don't understand how y'all honestly expect these teachers to teach our children as well as keep them safe and still be able to love them like they need. Out of our 15, I bet there's seven that don't get it at home. They need it from us and they're not going to get it without two teachers in a classroom. We've been very blessed with awesome teachers, but I will say, this year was a trial for us in first grade. My child was a victim of bullying. Every bit of the bullying happened on the playground where there was only one teacher to supervise what was going on. And it, it hurt her like y'all would not believe. It was, and it's not just my kid, it was a number of other children in the classroom. And so this is going to be going on for the seven hours our children are at school is there's nobody, there's only one teacher to completely keep them from grabbing, Johnny from grabbing June's peanut butter sandwich that he's highly allergic to and Katie from picking on, you know, my child who doesn't deserve it. But having said that, I mean, we were very blessed that the kindergarten room that we had this year, my child actually calls her assistant teacher grandmama. That's how much she loves her. And it's not because she doesn't get love at home, it's because this teacher took the time out of her day to help my child who had been with me for five years of her life adjust to all new people, a whole new place. She picked her up when she fell down, just amazing. And this is the woman that y'all are taking out of the school. It's not going to be there. She doesn't mind telling the kids that she loves them. And it's not just her, it's every other teacher assistant in our school personally. And so, I mean, I would just like for y'all to consider the budget and consider putting them back in our schools because it's going to be a huge effect on each and every child whenever they don't have two people to love them and to teach them every day. Thank you.
Thank you once again, Ms. Newton, for being here. Our next speaker is Ms. Debbie Boss. Is Ms. Boss here? There she is.
Mr. Chairman, Board, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and talk to you a little bit about the teacher assistant issue. My son, David, is a rising fourth grader and he is attending Mount Pleasant Elementary School. David does really well in school. He loves to learn and he loves school, but that is as a result of the fact that he had kind, caring, and compassionate teachers and teacher assistants in kindergarten, first grade, and additional help in second grade. David is wonderfully lovable and needs to be nurtured and cared for. He was first diagnosed with ADHD and then diagnosed with Asperger's Syndrome. And for those of you not familiar with Asperger's Syndrome, it is a high-functioning form of autism. So his needing additional help in the classroom is very personal to me because he's done so well as a result of having that extra help in the classroom and he loves school. His, his, he calls his teachers and the teacher's assistants, teachers as well. And so it's just very, very important that the kids coming along behind have that same additional help in the classroom because there are hundreds, if not thousands, of kids on the autism spectrum in Cabarrus County Schools and they need help. They need additional help if they're going to function and live in society and be functioning people. And they can, they're very capable. They just need a little extra help and they're not going to get that help if those assistants are taken out of the classrooms. They need that one-on-one attention. They need that help and they can get that through the public school system with your help. I more than once contemplated taking David out of the Cabarrus County School System and putting him in a private school because I was concerned about the education he was going to get and the help he was going to get. And every time I contemplated it, every teacher and staff member at Mount Pleasant Elementary turned around and surprised me, wonderfully so, and have done a remarkable job for my child. And that's as a result of you and the decisions that you all have made for years to ensure that the teachers and the teacher's assistants and the staff in those schools are doing what they need to be doing and at a high level. They're, and they're helping the students achieve at a high level. Please, 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 continue to make those decisions, to put the staff in place that need to be there to ensure that our children are able to function in society when they need a little extra help. They are so, so important. And so David will be okay because he had that help and assistance in the classroom, but the ones coming up behind him are going to slip through the cracks and I worry about that as a parent and educator. So please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you also once again, Ms. Boss, for your excellent presentation there. Our next speaker tonight is Ms. Barbara Watts. Is Ms. Watts here?
I'm going to read. I'm like Ms. Amber. She keeps my little special needs grandchild who will be coming in to Mount Pleasant. He is so excited. Today, we received from the Mary, I can't help but get emotional, I said I wouldn't. But today, he went to the Mary Frances Wild Center and he got a very good report and he's excited about coming to Mount Pleasant. And he's going to be with his big sister, so I'm going to start reading so I won't cry. I volunteered this school year and was overwhelmed with responsibilities in the classroom. Being a retired state employee with all my experience, this is a profession that has been financially cut too much. We need, at the expense of our children, these, these funds and we need these teacher's assistants. Areas that need the teacher's assistance are as follows. Fully funded teacher's assistance are needed for K through 3. These are the five-year-old babies of which my special needs grandson will begin. Teacher's assistants are educators. This is the most important goal of our public schools. Where will our children be when the last bell rings without their help? Values of teacher's assistance in the classroom are remediation, differentiation, behavior control, and clerical, and that's just to name a few. Experienced professional teacher's assistants have been financially cut too much. There is a negative impact of removing teacher's assistants. Security issues, health issues, individual assessments, workshop models cannot be taught properly by volunteers. Remediation- Remediation of students and communication with parents will suffer. Without teachers assistants to love our students, meet their daily needs, tooth pulling, wet clothes, forgotten lunches, and comforting their hurts, where will the importance to teach the complete student and not just part that answers the standardized quest, test questions be in order to help the whole child to make them responsible global citizens who will make a positive, meaningful contribution to our community and our world? We desperately need teachers assistants. Where will our children stand when the last bell rings for them? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watts. Our next speaker is William Brenick.
Good evening. I thank the school board, Dr. Shepherd, for listening to me tonight. My daughter will start kindergarten at Carr for in the fall. I would like to preface my remarks by saying, I understand you all are in a tight spot here with the budget cuts. You don't want to make the cuts, you have the unfortunate task of having to do so. With that said, I want to respectfully submit that you need to reconsider on the teacher assistants. As we know from what has been said so far, the teacher assistants help our excellent teachers in the classroom, a classroom with up to thirty students. They work one-on-one with the students, they help the students learn technology, they give extra care and instruction to students who are struggling. They assist the teacher when needed, because we all know that the class sizes aren't getting smaller. Why is this especially important in the earlier grade levels? It is imperative for students to be on reading level by the third grade. Students who are not on reading level at the third grade are four times as likely to drop out of high school, four. That doesn't even speak to the students that are struggling tremendously simply because they were behind at a crucial point in their careers. By cutting teacher assistants, especially at younger grade levels, we are increasing the chance of some of our children falling behind, especially with the larger class sizes. Students will be missing a valuable source of assistance and instruction in the classroom, and teachers will be missing a valuable assistant that helps them effectively instruct our children. So, what is to be done? I actually looked through the budget, it's pretty thick. Um, I understand that the requests you all make are not light and that much thought goes into them. With that said, does the Performance Learning Center really need a picnic shelter this year? Can we get by another year without installing cameras on activity buses? Do we really need duplicate requests for activity buses when field trips are already being curtailed due to budget cuts? A case can be made for these items and against, as with many the other budget requests. But I'm asking you for to look at these through the, look at these budget items through the lens of what helps our children in the classroom, which is the most important and the purpose of all of this. One glance at the county news headlines will tell you that the county commissioners are considering putting $165,000 into Central Cabarrus's planetarium. I understand that you all aren't a part of that, but how does it look countywide when we are cutting necessary personnel and then plan to refurbish the planetarium that has been in disrepair for years and even used for storage and auxiliary classroom space? What are we as a county thinking here? We must allocate funds differently to help keep teacher assistants in the classroom. We must all ensure to give our children every chance to succeed, from the parents at home to the school system itself. Funds are important and necessary, but just as important is making sure we distribute those funds such to ensure the best success for our children. Please help keep teacher assistants in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brenick. Our next speaker is Ms. Vicki Cobal. Is Ms. Cobal here? There she is.
Good evening. I'm a parent of two children with multiple special needs. And so, my oldest one is going into second grade, and he has an IEP, an Individual Education Plan. And I don't understand how his teacher could possibly follow his IEP without assistance. Uh, one of his main issues is that he has absent seizures, which a lot of people are not familiar with. They're not the fall-down, shaking, obvious grandma seizures. They're silent. And so, he is often accused of misbehaving or not paying attention, daydreaming. And that's not the case at all. When he gets accused of that, then his stress level goes through the roof, because now he's nervous, he knows he wasn't doing what he wasn't supposed to, but he's confused, because he's now, the class has moved on. He's like, I didn't hear you say that. And, and so, it's really important that he gets some one-on-one attention. At last testing, he has seizures every few minutes. And so, they may only last a few seconds, but after the few seconds, he comes out, now he's confused and trying to figure out where he is. He may have missed three sets of instructions in there. The other kids are moved on to something else. That, there needs to be somebody who sees that he's still working on math when now they're all in their independent study. You know, the teachers assistants are vital to any child who has an IEP. The, the classrooms are of twenty kids, they're talking about going to thirty kids. One teacher with every, if every child in the classroom was perfect and didn't need any extra help, I don't know how they could possibly do that. With children, especially in that age group, you know, you've got potty breaks and sickness and, you know, fooling around and all of that kind of stuff. That's a huge responsibility for one person, they can't see everything. One of the parents mentioned bullying. That was a problem with my son this year. There's a lot of points in there, walking through halls, there's corners and things that you, you know, you lose sight of all of the, the other students as well. Anyway, specifically in my son's IEP, you need to make eye contact when giving him direction. You need to ask him to repeat, so that he doesn't just say, yes, I heard you, and he didn't hear or understand a word you said to him. There's a lot of one-on-one that needs to be done with him, and that's one exceptional child in the mainstream. And that is the goal. We want to, you know, mainstream as many as possible. We don't want them separated into other classrooms when they can do the work in the mainstream classroom. The, uh, the assistants play a vital role in that. There's no way the teacher can handle even one child who needs that much care, much less multiple. I'm sure he's not the only one in his classroom that has an Individual Education Plan. And I don't know what would happen to him if he didn't get that care. He will get that care, because if I have to be there, he'll get it. But not everybody can do that. If I have to pull him out, he will get it. We went to private school because I wanted him to get it. You know, we entrust our children to you and to the teachers. Some people have no choice, you know? So, please reconsider that. They, they're of a vital role, and I don't know how teachers, stretched thin they are, could do without them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cobal. Our next speaker is Ellen Thomas.
Well, good evening, Dr. Shepherd, Madam Chairman, members of the school board, Ms. Monroe. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say, of course, thank you for your service and for your leadership that you give to this school system. It is appreciated. And I know that all of you must love and appreciate a good education. Otherwise, you wouldn't serve on this board. Second, I'd like to say a few words about our teacher assistants. My son is an up-and-coming second grader at Mount Pleasant Elementary. And I've had the privilege of getting to know a few TAs. Now, sure, I've seen them do, of course, what you would expect them to do. The reading mastery, the writing, the rocket math, all the other jobs, the various parties, anything like that, that's what you would expect, alright? But I've seen them do it, not only with a smile on their face, but a song in their heart and a kind word for everybody. Now, the TAs do more than just a job description, per se, alright? Last year, Mrs. Cook in the kindergarten area helped me discipline my little son. He had decided he was gonna try to lie to the teachers and play hooky. And, well, thanks to Mrs. Honeycutt and, of course, Mrs. Cook. That didn't happen, and he has never pulled that again. Last Christmas, Mrs. Lyerly made each parent a shadow print of their child. I have it back there, and you'll have to forgive me for not bringing it up. And now, I have to say, now, Santa was really good to me last year, but when I opened that shadow print, I cried. That was the precious, the most wonderful Christmas present I got that year. And I loved it. And as a result, I took that, I had it matted and framed, and that picture hangs up normally in my dining room, right next to my wedding portrait with my husband. And I will treasure that so much for the rest of my life. Anyway, I know the budget situation is not your fault. And your position is really not enviable. But I do ask that you please, please reconsider your decisions. Explore other options in order to keep the TAs. For instance, if Raleigh comes back and says, hey, we're gonna give you so much money to keep your TAs, please consider using that money for the TAs. They help the children, they've helped my son. Please, if anything, do it for the children, do it for my son, do it for Stephen. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. It's very rarely that we get a thank you for what we do. You know, and I thank you for thanking us. Our last speaker is Ms. Angela Wilson. Is Ms. Wilson here?
I guess since I'm going last, I'm gonna echo what everyone else said. I do appreciate you listening to me say, thank you, thank you. I started off on a good write, huh? I do have two children that attend Mount Pleasant Elementary School. And it's just like Ms. Amber said. My daughter was in fifth grade this year. There was twenty-eight students in her class, twenty-eight. And Amber had trouble keeping up with fifteen today. And you're talking about fifth graders? That's a lot of girl drama and stuff going on. And, I mean, we really had a really hard time this year. And so, you know, teachers assistants, they're very much needed. And two plus our, I've done, I looked at the Mount Pleasant, the EOGs, and just their math, they're, they're one of the biggest schools in the county. Of course, you know that. And so, their EOG and their math scores, it was well below state. And overall, they're, they're only at sixty to eighty percent of where they should be. And with this, one of the largest schools, you would think that would be more. You know, and if you just pull the teachers assistants out, those numbers are just gonna continue to go off, go down. And another thing that our Mount Pleasant teachers do, and I know this personally, because like I said, my children has been there since kindergarten. Teachers assistants, they are there, like one of the parents said, to love and, you know, nurture the child, because the child spends more time at school than they do at home. They spend more time with their teachers or teachers assistants than they do at their own house with their parents. And some of the children do not have the loving parents and, you know, the ones that's gonna sit down and take the time to do, you know, their homework or whatever they need. And so, that is where the teachers assistants come into play, and they actually do, you know, give the child a hug, tell them they love them. I mean, it's very important, teachers assistants is very important. And you're talking about like the, um, this, just the count. That's, that's what I'm, that's what bothers me, is the amount of students in the classroom, because it is hard to keep up with, you know, ten, fifteen kids. And so, that is just gonna make the scores, you know, go down, continue to go down. I'm thinking so. Alright.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, and thank all of you that spoke tonight. For one of the first times ever, all ten of my speakers showed up, and I thank you for being here. And I want you to know that you've been heard. And, and as one of the speakers said, you know, the budget dilemma does not always come from the school board. And in this situation here, it's not coming from the school board, it's coming from the state. But I was thinking, you know, we live in an entirely different society than we did for folks my age. I won't tell you how old I am. But anyway, whenever I was in elementary school, we had thirty-three kids in my classroom in the first grade. Well, now, we didn't have kindergarten that then. Thirty-three kids without a teacher assistant. But one of the things that's different from then, one of several things that's different from then until now, back then, in the sixties, late, late fifties and early sixties, that does tell you a little bit about how old I am. It was usually just the dad worked, the mom didn't work. It was one person in the family that did the work. Lot of farms back then. We had cannon mills back then. They'd go to work at seven, come home at three, and the dad would work. And back then, we had spanking in school. When you misbehave, guess what? When you got home, when you got home, that, that, the school spanking was the easy thing. When you got home, my dad, I never went, I never got by without getting the double dose of what I got at school. And I remember Ms. Broome giving me my first spanking in the first grade. But what I'm saying, we live in a different society, and you're right. Those children in the K through three, K two, at, at the least, K two, they need that extra attention. They need it, because they don't get it at home. Mom's working, dad's working, they're doing everything they can do just to make ends meet. And I know that, I know how that is. And I want you to know, I don't believe that there's a board member up here with me, and if Jeff was here, Jeff would say the same thing, that would disagree with what you've said tonight. Because we realize that, and we know that. And we have tried our best to convince the legislatures, the ones that's making the decisions, that we have to go by. And Ms. Klutz, our chief financial officer, as we just gave her an award here just earlier, you know, we know the value, but the money has to be there. I mean, we just can't reach up and pull it off the tree somewhere. And then, you know, you're talking about some of the things that we have done in the district, such as the planetarium, as one gentleman mentioned. Well, I want you to understand that our funding comes from various different sources, various sources. And when it comes in for, say, capital, that money has to be spent on capital projects. We can't take capital money and pay operations expenses with it. You can't co-mingle funds. You can't use funds that came for one thing to use it something else. So, we are extremely limited on pretty much everything that we do. We're limited by a state mandate, a general statute, or certain things. Technology, for example, we are, we are limited. It has to go to technology. So, I just wanted you to understand that this is heard, what you said tonight. We've heard it, and it's clear to us. And I, I, I can almost assure you that if, when they meet, and I'm thinking they probably, if they don't meet this week, they'll be meeting very soon in their joint sessions where the House and the Senate will come together, and they'll iron out their differences and hopefully come up with a budget that will be more kinder to our system and to teacher assistants across the board, for not just only Cabarrus County, but for the state. And so, we'll have to just wait and watch and see what happens. But if the funding comes back, then I'm sure that we'll be bringing some of the TAs back, as many as we can, with the funding that we get. So, just once again, I, I just want you to know that we appreciate you coming out and voicing your opinion and standing up for what you think is right, because we think you're right as well, okay? Okay, board members, we're gonna move on and conduct the rest of the meeting here tonight. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. And as you know, we had to remove the Title I program from that, and it will be nine point two on our action agenda. So, with the consent agenda being as it is presented, less the Title I, do I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda? So moved. Okay, I have plenty of firsts, seconds, and all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries six oh. The next item on our agenda is an action item. We'll be voting on this tonight. This is where Mr. Wickie will come to the podium and talk with us about the new bids, or not new bids, but what they got worked out on the J N Freeze Middle School. Thank you, Mr. Wickie.
Yes, if you will, the side plant, the roof plant, I'm sorry. The roof plant?
The roof plant? Thank you. Good evening. I'm hoping that in front of you, you have a document that talks about our, our discussions with the contractor. And what I thought I would do, because that was entered very late, we, we have met with contractors, we've, we've talked with many resources, including contractors who did not bid the project, but were recommended as, as authorities and people who would be knowledgeable in the business. And we've, we've talked also with representatives of manufactured products. And what we've basically come down to, and, and I just put this plan in really to, to demonstrate a couple of things. One is the area in green represents the base bid work that we're talking about this evening. The area in orange or tan or brown, I'm not sure what your monitor shows, but the phase two work is, is what is shown as the alternate one. So the area to your, to the left on the screen is alternate one, and the green areas are alternate, are on the base bid. The blue areas represent what we did as part of our original project a year or so ago. And that work has been done. Now, in fairness, the area in blue is, represents an area that was done strictly by putting a membrane down on what existed. We, we didn't add insulation to that part of the roof. In retrospect, it would have been a good thing to do. We, we didn't do that because that's how it was originally scoped out, originally presented on the QSCB documents. What we're, what we're trying to do now is, in, in these newer areas, in the remaining areas of the school, is to increase the insulation value. But in talking about, I'll, I'll just go as we, we go along, a couple of things that we talked about was, can we reduce the insulation value, save some money in the project, and still maintain a good quality roof? That would be a benefit to the inhabitants and also save energy. And what we've decided is that a two-inch insulation compared to the four-inch that was originally specified would give us an R-value of approximately 15 to 17. That's, the code requires on a brand-new building, if you were starting from scratch today, a minimum of 25. So in talking with consultants and talking with other contractors in the business, we really feel that, that on an existing building, especially an existing building that doesn't have insulation everywhere, that the portions that we're doing now, if we can get an R-15 on those roof areas, that that would be a big plus in terms of the energy use of the building. And unfortunately, the long and the short of it is, in terms of, we, by changing the insulation value and by attaching the roof in a different manner, I spoke strongly about being concerned about the mechanical fastening, only to find out, and, and I have to admit, it was my bias. My bias was that I'd come from, from an arena where we had historically always fully adhered roofs. And I, it was explained to me by several contractors that that's not what the recommendation is of the manufacturer. They do recommend fastening with mechanical devices. And it's because of the uplift problems of this area. And so in talking with a representative of the PVC manufacturer, he assured me that was the preferred method that the manufacturer likes to use with their product. So I'm going to recommend to the board that we accept that because it does save money, and that we do reduce the insulation to a more moderate level, and accept the base bid reduced by the contractor to a value of $186,560. I will say that I spoke with Ken Michael this afternoon. I explained what we were attempting to do in terms of the negotiation. And he said his original concern was that, and he may have misunderstood the numbers, he wasn't looking at a document when I was talking to him the first time, he, he thought that I had said that we were going to negotiate more than half of the value of the project. And that's what his concern was. He said, in fairness to the contractors involved that have bid so far and done, done the negotiating with us, he, so he felt that a savings of approximately $55,000 was fair, and he felt it was in, in a range that was comfortable to negotiate, and he, he supported the idea. The, the difficulty is we, we don't have funds sufficient, based on even taking into account these changes, we don't have enough money with all the dollars currently available to us to do the alternate work, the, what I call the 600 wing of the building. I do want to work with the contractor as we get the project underway, see if there are alternative methods that we can look at there. I will say that we, in, in direct response to Mr. Keiger's request, we did look at TPO, which was a, a similar material. The large contractor that I spoke to, who does both TPO and, I know it's jargon, but stay with me, TPO versus PVC roof membranes, felt that the TPO products had, back about five, seven, five to seven years ago, had some significant wear problems, that they were, they were, it was, it was a function of the material makeup and its reaction to a reflected light condition on roofs. The manufacturers now claim that they've repaired that or changed their, their chemical makeup in, in product to be a better product. The contractor who's installing both simply said to me, I can't tell you, Len, that they've done that yet. We don't have enough time and grade to, to really honestly say, yes, we, we feel that's been accomplished. So far, he said, things appear to be better. But he said, in honesty, he said, I installed both, and I'm, I'm telling you, I recommend going with the PVC right now because we know the performance of that product, and it's very good. So that's what I'm sharing with you this evening, with the hope that we stay with the PVC, we reduce the amount of insulation, and we go to a mechanically fastened roof condition, a roof application rather than a glued application. And stay with the reduced base bid work, and allow me the opportunity to look at other alternatives for the 600 wing in the future as a change order to the contract.
Mr. Wickie, I thank you for your due diligence in going back to the drawing board, meeting with these contractors, and trying to save us some money.
You're welcome.
I mean, you, you saved us approximately $55,000, $56,000 by making a change in scope. I for one appreciate that, for lack of funds and other reasons. But I'd like to give the board an opportunity to ask you whatever questions they have in reference to the change. And we'll start on Mr. Shoemaker's side, and then we'll get our discussion out of the way, then we'll vote. Okay?
Thank you.
You and I have previously talked about this project, so I have no more questions for you. I think you've clarified it pretty well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
All right, where are we, well, I mean, you said, where are we really at now? What's the difference? And what do we have left in our balance of the, the other projects? So what's our bottom line?
Right.
What are we trying to work to, to get? What do we need?
Okay. The bottom line is, we, we asked for $30,000 originally as part of this earlier budget amendment that Kelly presented last week. That, that is incorporated into my calculations when I tell you that, based on the money that we asked for last week, the $155,000 roughly is what we currently are looking at as, as money available. Plus approximately $114,000, almost $115,000 that is available in the Northwest Athletic Fields project. We're asking, we'll be asking for that money to be moved to this project so that it would give us a total, a val, total amount available of approximately $270,000. We'd be subtracting from that the $186,000, $560 for the base bid work. It would leave us with roughly $84,000 to come up with a solution for the 600 wing. And I think there is a solution, we just have to work through it with the contractor. But, but that's the money that is available. It's subject to approval of the last budget amendment by the county commissioners, and then another amendment that we'll make, present, present to you in the July budget, excuse me, in the July meeting, that will ask for the movement of the funds from the Northwest Fields to this project. So, and the contractor's aware of that, he's willing to hold his budget and, and work with us. Does that explain?
No, no, what do I need? You confuse me even more. I mean, what, what we, what, what's, what's the bottom line here? I mean, what do we really, I mean, what's the, the bo, very bottom line? What do we actually need to, to do this? That's what I'm act, have actually asked it. What is the bottom line?
Let me try, Carolyn.
Okay, you try.
We can, you can approve the base bid tonight.
Okay.
We have funds available to do that.
Okay.
We're going to ask you to, to approve a budget amendment to take $114,000 out of the Northwest Practice Fields. Once you do that, he can make a recommendation on the, the way that he wants to work the 600 wing.
Okay.
Now, if we were to accept the, the bid the way that it is presented right now, I think what you want to know, we would be $40,000 short. We don't have $40,000. So he's going to go back to the drawing board and try to figure out a different way to reduce that down within the dollars that we have after we make that transfer.
Okay, that's, I said, we're $40,000 short. So that's, okay. That's, that was where I'm coming from. Okay. That was my question. So we still need $40,000. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Keiger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and Ms. Carpenter, I was going to make a quick comment. Last week, we were 91 short. Today, we're 40 short. That's where the 55, that, that's, what we spent the last week whittling down was we got another 55 out of the project. So I'm, I don't really have any other questions and comments. I think we did exactly what we needed to do, which was work to whittle it down. The question between the TPO and the PVC, if the contractor, if I'm, if I remember something that, that we spoke about, even if we went with the other one, if he was fully comfortable with it, it was only about a 7 percent difference. So to me, 7 percent's not enough to have him install something that he would prefer to be installing something else. So to me, that, that, I'm okay with that. I, I think the, the, the R-value is fine on the, the two-inch. So anyway, I think you did exactly what my intention was when we were talking about last week, was just see what else is out there, figure out a way to whittle the number down. So thank you very much for your, your due diligence on that.
Thank you, Mr. Keiger. Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I'm still a little bit confused as well. I appreciate this diagram, that's helpful for me. So initially, we want, we, we bid the green and the orange, and it came back that we couldn't afford either the green or the orange?
That, that is correct, yes.
Okay. So then we, we've gone out, we've said the Northwest Field Project, we're not going to do anyway, so we've got some money there to move over?
Mm-hmm, correct.
That will cover the green area?
Yes, sir.
And the orange area, or just the green area?
No, no, to cover right now, it would just cover the green area. And I'll work with the contractor to sort out, there, there's a couple of choices that we have to make in the way of materials that, that we may be able to do that wing. It, it would probably be different from what we're doing on the rest of the building.
Similar to what you did with the blue?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're, have they reduced their base bid? Is that what they've done?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay. So what is that base bid now?
It's $186,560. $186,560.
Okay. I think I understand a little bit better now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Walter, just for clarification, I want you also to know that the money we're talking about moving, the $114,000, that's not for the Northwest, it's for the Bogart Northwest Middle and Northwest High Practice Field. Because it's all right there, it's not, don't want to label it for Northwest or Bogart, it's for all three of those schools in that area.
But it's a field that we can't build, or?
No, we're not going to be able to do it at this time because we didn't get the money thanks to sequestration, federal government.
Are no other projects that were given up on, on this, to do this project? Are we losing something else, or is it just that field?
That's all, that's all right now for sequestration, we lost those funds.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Mr. Harrison?
Yes, sir. With, again, thanks again for all this, your diligence and work on this. With the ample rains we've had in the last really month or so, I feel, I'm sure you feel like the little dyke boy trying to plug in holes, and not many of you in this room get that, that, that old, old contract. But at this particular school, in your graph here, have there been leaks to that roof? Have there been issues? And is your plan covering obvious damage and, and the needs, as you can tell from the current wear and tear and weather effects on the roof?
The, when we, when we first did the area in blue, that was because it was, we're leaking the worst of all the areas.
Sure.
What I, what I mean by that is that every roof leaks there. Literally, every part of the roof leaks. And it's only a question of, you know, how much, how much additional patching material we can put on and how long that will hold. Every patch is just subject to time and wear, temperature, conditions and environment. We, we can put a patch on today and it can hold for a couple of months. We can put a patch on today and it can come off in a couple of weeks. So it's, it's a constant battle that we fight, and it's not just this roof, I mean, it's many.
Due to the construction of this roof and the, and many factors.
Absolutely.
But we're doing the best we can do?
With what we have, absolutely. And, you know, tonight we'll, I mean, tomorrow morning, we'll be out patching roofs.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're all.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. All right, board members, everybody clear? Everybody understand what we're doing? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion that the board accept the bids as submitted and approved with the changes in materials as noted to reduce the cost of affordable roofing's base bid and accept their revised base bid of $186,560. Do I have a motion that we approve this bid?
Yes, I also move.
All right, Mr. Shoemaker makes the motion, Mr. Harrison second. If there's all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
One question. I'm sorry. Do we not have to move the money first? Shouldn't we move the money before we approve the bid?
I think Ms. Klutz will be taking care of that with the budget amendment.
You're not approving the, the alternate, you're only approving the base bid. And we have money for the base bid. Once the county does their approval of the budget amendment on Monday, so we'll, he won't issue the contract until after that approval has taken place. You're okay?
Yeah, we can't put the cart in front of the horse, in other words.
Okay, I just want to make it clear.
Okay, Carolyn. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Wickie.
I was going to say, if, if you wanted to make it, add to the language pending movement of the funds, you know, that, that's up to the board, of course, but you can certainly do that. We, we won't cut, we certainly won't execute any contracts until the funds are in place.
Oh, absolutely. I know Ms. Klutz won't allow that.
That's absolutely right.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Wickie.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you.
We take our plaque back.
Okay. Board members, we're going to move on. Our last action item here tonight is, as you know, we moved from the consent agenda to 9.2, which is the Title I funding. And this is an action item, so we got Jason with us. And Jason, I guess you're going to talk with us about this.
Yeah, Mr. Sho, members of the board, want to bring back the Title I budget that we presented to you last week. We've gone back, heard, heard a lot of your comments from last week, and believe we have a better budget for you to approve tonight.
Okay, so as Jason said, we are coming back to you this evening because we revised the original 2013, 2014 Title I budget as we presented it last week's work session. After going back to the budget and reviewing multiple options that would continue to provide our Title I schools with funding levels as close to what they were before sequestration, while also exploring opportunities to ease the transition of fur from a Title I school to a non-Title I school, we're coming to you with that alternative option. We've revised the budget to include one year of a reduced funding rate for fur as allowable by the grandfathering option of Title I federal guidelines for previously served schools. So that guideline states that for one additional year only, LEAs may designate and serve a school attendance area or school that is no longer eligible but was eligible and served in the previous year. So therefore, we intend to follow this provision to provide fur with a bridge from full Title I funding this school year to a full reduction of Title I funds in 2014, '15. So what that means is that the proposed budget reflects the bridge, so they would get reduced funding next year and then would not receive Title I funds in 2014, '15. So you can see that revised budget in the executive summary, and we'd like to recommend that you consider that budget for approval as opposed to the one that we presented at the work session last week.
Okay, board members, I believe that amounts, what, $75,000, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, is that what we got, 2012, 2013? What, how much are we losing because of the Title I funding?
That is about one-third of the budget that they received last year. It's a little bit more than one-third.
A little more than one-third. But now, this is only for 2013, '14, and then it goes away?
Yes, the grandfathering option is only allowable for one year.
Okay, I, I do remember reading that, and so I'm glad we're taking advantage of it. So, Dr. Shepherd has a comment.
I would say that it would go away unless we look at what happens, you, you, I think we've heard that the charter school could affect the school negatively. So if we pull away a high percentage of our wealthier families, that would create a higher percentage of free and reduced lunch students, and then fur might qualify next year.
Right, so that is with their current level of free and reduced lunch, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd, for the clarification. Okay, we'll give the board opportunity, the time to ask questions, and we'll start on Mr. Harrison's side. If you have questions, reference to the revision of Title I.
I commend you for your sensitive and compassionate approach to the needs of car fur and school and the population of students there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Also wanted to mention to the viewing audience, and for the board members, the actual budget itself did not change. It's still 2.9 million, I believe it is, for this funding, so it didn't change. In other words, the money was pulled from here, 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 and here, that type thing, to make up this $75,000, so we can continue our work at FUR.
Yes.
Okay?
And just to reemphasize, you've said it, we've said it, we all understand it, but this is a one-year arrangement?
Yes, it is.
For 2013-14?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Walter?
And so, these savings, they can be used to, for teaching or teacher assistant positions?
Correct.
How many of those can we keep?
That'll be a school-level decision, the school improvement team will make that, but $75,000 could, I don't know what the conversions are, three?
And so, they'll have to go back and do everything that all of the other Title I schools do, and they'll go through all of the school-wide components that we talked about last year, and align the support with whatever that school improvement plan is. So, they'll be looking at what are the various options for those funds, but yes.
I commend you for going through, and figuring something out here, but the other schools will not have the same level that they had last week, is that correct?
That is correct. We took about $15,000 off of professional development from the top, if you look at that district allocation, to professional development, that's about 15 less, and then we did have to reduce the allocations for the other schools. But we kept the rate as close as we could to last year's funding, so it isn't a huge reduction for those other schools.
Okay, and for some reason, the sequestration gets stuff figured out, that'll be an increase in funding?
Well, sequestration probably is not going to change. That's different from some of the other pieces, so that will probably, at least for this year, stay the same for this year's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Kiger.
Thank you. I think Dr. Shepherd brought up the point that I wanted to make sure I was clear on, that the second year out, I mean, we, I understand, as we sit here today, we're going to say, well, they won't get it then, but something could change between now and then, so it's going to be revisited, just like we revisited the entire program.
So, we'll come back to you next spring, and we'll be looking at all of the schools, and we'll redo the whole thing.
That's exactly what I thought, because we don't know what it's going to look like a year from now. I mean, we think we do, but our crystal ball's not any better than anybody else's. Well, the only other comment I wanted to make was, this is really a good example of kind of what we, what we deal with on a macro level, of what you guys have done in the last week on a micro level. We've, we've added a program, we found something to take advantage of, but at the end of the day, there's a flip side to it, that somebody else lost something along the way. And that's what we, you know, that's what we're having to do with a variety of these types of programs. So, I'm very happy that we were able to get this squared away. I guess I just want, in light of all the comments that we heard, and Mr. Sho's comments, that we do hope the funding comes back to us for all the TAs, but I just, as a very, very small example, this is sort of what we have to juggle. You know, we're taking it from here, to kind of slide over there, and it seems like kind of a Band-Aid, but for this particular year, I think we're doing the right thing to, at least, provide that for FUR. So, I trust, without getting into too much detail where that came from, that you guys are very comfortable with the decisions you made, or you wouldn't have, or you wouldn't have made them. So, that's, thank you for your hard work and diligence on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Carpenter, do you have your questions, comments?
Well, again, thank you for your efforts, and this is a start. I mean, we're working, and again, we're taking a little bit here, and a little bit there, but we knew there was a need there, and we said this to start with, you know, when we were here last week, we said, "What would it take to put FUR back?" Was that not the words we said? And we're glad to see that we found a way for that maybe to happen, and we know it's just one year, but we, I know David was down there, and I think that ended the, we said that. We said, "What was your words? That stinks."
This week, it doesn't stink as bad.
And I think I said on this end, that, I said, "That smelled."
But thanks for improving that.
But we didn't like that, and we see that you did that. And you know, you know my response, I'm really happy that we see, we're seeing some TAs come back, and let's keep working on it, you know. I'm real happy about that. And I know it's a little bit, but, you know, we work a little bit. Where there's a will, there's a way. I think I heard that comment, too. So, thanks a lot, and let's just keep working, see what we can do. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Shoemaker, do you have your question?
Well, I applaud you for going through all of the federal regulations, I'm sure that was hidden somewhere deep in paragraph subset, whatever. Thank you for finding that. I also see that you had to take some money out of your development budget, that you were allocating for teaching, you know, working with your teachers and all that, so, you know, again, we don't get to get instruction to our teachers, to help them administer the programs more effectively, and so, that's a little bit of a loss, in that you borrowed money, or took money from everybody, a little bit, and that they ended it up, that the parent rate went down 52 cents. So, you know, it went from 8.52 last week to $8 this week, so, you know, the overall student cost did go down, and that was what we were concerned about, was the overall cost. But let's hope that we don't have another outcome next year that we have to deal with, and that we can continue to work with these children that we need to. Thank you all again for what you're doing, and helping the folks at FUR out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Okay, Board members, everybody clear on our motion? All right, may I, I'll accept a motion that the Title I program be approved as revised, with the new version, the new numbers that Jason has provided us with.
So moved.
Mr. Shoemaker makes the motion. Ms. Carpenter seconds the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Mrs. Atros, for helping us.[1711.13][1711.13](APPLAUSE). Ladies and gentlemen, once again, I want to thank you all for being here. I think that you see that you've been heard, because we're working on it behind the scenes all the time, trying to work, make things better, to continue to make Cabarrus County schools, without a doubt, the clear choice. We don't have all the answers, but we're working on it.